All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to be starting tonight's meeting. The Lynn Zoning Board of Appeals being held tonight, Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, at 7:00 P. M.
Keep reading some here.
If we can have a roll call of our members present, please.
Member Gilwing? Member Pat Massey? Member Peas?
Present.
Okay. Member Maggio?
Present.
Member Olson?
Present.
Member Crowitz?
Present.
Member Christopher?
Yeah.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Present. Um, we have a quorum, um, just for the last-
Six meetings.
Meeting, meetings, uh, meeting minutes. If I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
So, okay.
All right, I will second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those have been approved. Um, we're going to start first with one of the new cases. Um, we're going to start with case number 1010838 South Carmen Street. If we can have a reading, please.
Do I have that one?
Yeah. It's on your things.
What's the rest of it?
Oh, we don't have this. And we have the second page there.
Okay, here it is. Sorry.
It's at the very bottom.
Yeah. So, 38 South Carmen Street, Lynn, Massachusetts, parcel number 052732004. Petitioner, Neighborhood Development Associates, Inc., 10 Church Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. By its attorney, James D. Moore, CBA case 10101. To extend the time for the petitioner to exercise the variance granted by the zoning board of appeals from June 6th, 2025 to December 6th, 2025, as provided for in Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10.
We can have the petitioner come in?
Good evening. Jeff Leing, on behalf of the Neighborhood Development Associates, with an address of 10 Church Street, uh, in Mass, looking to extend the variance granted.
Thank you. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Is this the old Amory site? So they're making veterans.
Oh, this is the veterans. Okay.
The two units of that.
That's my thought, okay.
And just curious, uh, what happened for the timeline change?
It's just getting the funding place. There's historic tax credits, this state loan housing tax credit. Uh, we've got a syndicator, uh, on board with a letter of intent now, so we can do diligence. So we're open for closing the ransom.
Oh, okay. Uh, I move to extend the deadline, um, from June 6th to 12/6 for 38 South Carmen Street.
I'll second.
We have a second. Um, we can have a roll call.
Member Maggio to extend?
Yes, to extend.
Member Christopher to extend?
Yes.
Member Olson to extend?
Yes, to extend.
Member Crowitz to extend?
Yes.
And member Lopez Hernandez to extend?
Yes, to extend.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Happy day.
Good luck.
All right. So now we're going to go back to our continued case. Case number 1009639 Lynn Shore Drive.
Doesn't need.
You want to do Ferris for us because the architect isn't here yet?
Okay, and the other case is yours, Mr. Vitale?
Excuse me?
The other case is yours?
Ferris.
Ferris? All right.
Why don't we do-
So we'll do a reading and we'll take on case number 101077 Ferris Road. If we can have a reading, please.
Yeah. 7 Ferris Road, Lynn, Massachusetts, parcel number 088128049. Petitioner, Marta Lopez, on behalf of AMC Quality Builders, Inc., 7 Ferris Road, Lynn, Massachusetts, by his attorney, Samuel A. Vitale, CBA case 10107. To vary pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 48, Section 10, the provisions of the City of Lynn's Zone Ordinance to allow an accessory structure shed, constructed in error, located proximate because of topography, to a conforming, single-family dwelling with roof decks now attached to the dwelling in the out one district on a 10,500 square foot lot with 100 feet, five feet of frontage and conforming front and rear yards. Sidelines and lot, lot coverage setback for accessory structure shed not in conformance with the requirements of 6.8 of the Zone Ordinance and to permit an employee, granddaughter of the, of petitioner, not a household member, to be present on the premises. Section 6.4.1.9 and Section 6.4.1.10, the variance request requires the zoning board of appeals to specifically find that owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape or topography, or such land or structures, and especially affecting such lands or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Um, we'll open it up to the petitioner.
Thank you. My attorney, Samuel Vitale, this is Marta Lopez, uh, who owns the property at Penner's Road. This is her granddaughter, Maria Lopez. The bring to see this evening is a strange set of, uh, facts. The building department got a complaint, um, about trucks being parked at 48 Mall Street. I, I came in on 48 Mall Street recently and moved to a single-family dwelling here. And if you recall, I said at that time that the neighbors were unhappy eating at 48 Mall Street, that there were trucks being parked in this lot, which the city sold for a bargain. And, uh, in response to that, the owner of the property had the, uh, the tenant, removed the truck, and the tenant was this AMC Builders, which, uh, Marta is an officer.
Got a picture.
Maria is an employee. Uh, Paul, and his, uh, vigilance tracked the trucks to 7 Ferris Road and had an encounter with Maria, who told the truth. He said, uh, "What are you doing here?" She said, "I work here." I said, "You work here." And then, uh, he also ran the registration and found that her car is registered somewhere else. So for maybe 10 years on board, uh, registered with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, AMC Builders, listed this place of, uh, business at 7 Ferris Road, and its resident agent is Marta. And no one had any complaints in the neighborhood. No one had any, uh, concerns. The other observation the building department made was that there's a shed. Uh, that's not really the problem. If you've been there, you saw the topography of the, the site, which limited where the shed could go. But it would appear that they, uh, at some point in, you know, 2018 or 2019, roofs were put over the decks. So we got roofs over the decks. Well, once you do that, it became part of the structure. And once it becomes part of the structure, you can't have a shed within six feet of the, the main building. So that led to a violation, uh, of the dimensional requirements. So one of the reasons that we're seeking is there were two possibilities. And I think I put in the, uh, the package, uh, Tim Oliver, who's the building inspector, said, "You either do X or you do Y." And so he said, "Go get a variance and then pay a fine for the, uh, construction and file a permit, and then you can keep the roof decks. You don't have to remove them and you don't have to move the shed." So we're here, uh, the first request is we're all up to the variance of the proximity of the shed to the house with the roof decks. And we've got Mr. Reed's plot plane that shows, uh, that. So that, uh, that is a dimensional, uh, issue. The second issue is, that I'm here on is that the city does allow certain home occupations, many home occupations, including an office for a contractor. And there's like 25 conditions that you need to satisfy to, uh, have a home occupation. And if you don't have an occupation that falls within those, you need to go get a special permit from the city council. All but two of those 25, uh, are satisfied or can be satisfied. What, what can't be changed is that Maria, the granddaughter, who works as essentially the only employee in a grandmother's house, uh, which is the location of the business, doesn't live in the house. So I looked up the Webster's Dictionary, dictionary definition of a household. It would be stretched because you'd have to sleep there one night, a year or whatever. But she certainly, this is her grandmother, this is Maria. She's worked there. Nobody's had any complaints. So I, when I asked them about the ability to either remove the roofs or move the shed, and the shed difficulty was the topography, I said, "All right, we'll file a variance because that's what Tim Oliver said they ought to do." Um, I spoke with the board council. Uh, I provided the same materials I did for you about how we got to where we are. And, uh, so the second part of the relief is this, that we'll meet every stipulation for a home occupation, but I can't make, uh, and, and to their credit, they had told all of them, I would say this. These folks, when there was a complaint on Mall Street, they packed up and left. Uh, the owner paid the fines. Mall Street is now going to be a home. They, uh, when, uh, the building department sent its people to speak with them, they told them the absolute truth. Because what they knew at the time is, hey, we're registered with the state. We've got an LLC. The only person that comes to the home is Maria. They answer the phone and run the office of the, the contractor. Uh, and so, uh, that second part of that is to seek, uh, permission from your, uh, and so your home occupation ordinance is part of the city, uh, zone ordinance. And I think you have the ability to, uh, to vary the ordinance. And so in that, we've got, uh, we, you know, we can stand on our head and bend the rules. But the reality is, we're just telling you what the facts are. Um, and so if you were to approve this petition, what we would then have is that roofed decks would stay, the shed would stay where it is, which is closer than six feet to the now extended building because, uh, of the roof decks. And, uh, the second thing was that Maria can go to the office and, which is a grandmother's house, and answer the phone.
Okay. Thank you. Here we go. Any questions, comments from the board? On the petition?
How, how close is the shed to the building now?
I think it's a read's plan. And it's prox- well, it's, it's literally beside it because there's a, you know, an issue with the topography here about moving the shed.
Yeah.
So, uh, if those, if those decks didn't have that roof.
Yeah.
Then the shed would be fine. But once they put the roof over the deck, that brought the whole thing into play.
So is the roof overhanging the shed or is it, there a little airspace between it?
We've got photographs.
Okay.
I didn't see them. Did you see them?
We should wear it came before.
Were these provided before?
I asked.
No, yeah, I asked to see them because I knew that, that that would be a potential question. So this is the home.
I gave you the plan.
These are the lists.
The less.
Decks.
Yeah.
I gave you the plan before you left. But they're in the full direction.
Okay.
This is the side view of the house.
Yeah. I'm right there.
So that garage is, that's the shed? What's the shed?
You have to pass it this way when you're done, please.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, so, so that, that shed is, is locked?
Yes.
Typically locked?
Yeah, you mean in terms of access to the-
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, except I'm concerned with accessory buildings, people getting in there and vandalizing where it's close to the house. If it's locked, I'm not as-
And I would say this, part of the, you, you can certainly make as a stipulation that, uh, every condition to have a, because even if you were to approve this, we still have to go and do these things. We have to get a, uh, a permit with respect to the roof decks and the shed, uh, from, and pay a fine to the building department. And in terms of the home occupation, um, you could put, because I think there are always questions about, are they storing materials? Once they moved the, the contractor's yard stuff from Mall Street, they found another location. So like, there's no problem in saying, "Don't put anything in the shed except the lawn mower" or whatever. I think you see a picture of the barbecue propane tanks. It's a non-storing, visit, building materials in the shed. And, uh, and her, her vehicle, she drives a personal car. She doesn't have a car. You know, it's a commercial registration. That's how she comes from the pulling, to, to her grandmother's house, who happens to own the, the house next door, which is a lot. Um, but so we don't have a problem with that. It's just that we would, uh, we thought that this, given what the building department, uh, recommended in the, uh, weather, and I think he had a talk, he said, "If you don't have given it to you, what they said we should do and where the permit is at," uh, we thought this was a, a practical solution that you could assist us with.
Okay. And member Christopher, sign your hand. Any questions?
Um, yeah, I, I was looking at a previous picture. Um, I, I guess one question I do have is, how did we get here with the, with the family member situation? I don't understand why that wouldn't be allowed under our current zoning.
There's two sections that say, um, no person other than-
Just get the-
I, I think the real answer, and I see Attorney Lemon, I, whatever his opinion, I obviously respect, but I, I think it's that, uh, it's a claim that you're part of the household. I think you have to live there. But when asked that question, she told the truth. She doesn't live there.
So is, well, is the city's position that they're operating a business that shouldn't be or?
So, Lord, this is clear. Uh, if you're not a member of the household, we need a special permit from the city council. And if, if a brother is free to do that, you could not vary that part of the ordinance.
So are we saying that she is living there?
She is not living there. So we can't add another special permit. And we just wanted to buy, vary the ordinance to say special permits are likely away from the city council.
So even if we approve this variance, um, she would still have to go before city council to get their special-
If I give a conversation to the board council, he, he has opposed to this, but-
Wings on.
Yes. But the ordinance is quite clear.
Right.
If you, if you happen to not remember the household, working at the business, you'd require a special permit from the city council.
Thank you. I, I had a quick, are you done? I had a really quick question because I'm just a little bit confused. It doesn't take much these days to confuse me. Um, you said there were two things that, out of the 20, plus or minus 25 things that are required to do this, and that was one person.
It's, uh, we both, both in the world.
Just, okay. What you said was one person is not occupying the building, that they need to occupy the building in order to work there. And then the second thing you said was she needs to come work there. So to me, that's like the same thing. I'm not really sure.
Uh, moving for that second meeting. Both, and second-
Living in those. But she has the living.
It was a two.
It goes to the definition again, what is a household member, fully. And as I say, she's related by law. Right. So to be a household member, I think you gotta live there at least one day a year or whatever. And she told the truth.
Yeah.
She hasn't lived there. And I have got the second, that's the first thing. Thank you.
Okay.
What is that? Those are the decks.
Two issues.
It's how we get away. It's how, it's, yes, right. One is, one is a dimensional issue, the relationship of the shed location to the house, which would have been fine, but for when they put roof deck and made the house larger, which put it in close proximity to the shed. If those roof decks get removed, if they did that, then they wouldn't be within six feet, even though the shed is where it is. So if we keep it the way it is, they need a variance to keep it the way it is, the location of the shed to the roof decks. That's, that's one issue. The other issue is that that got observed when they came in response to a complaint somewhere else about the business and found, uh, not only the business, but Maria did.
Okay.
So, so if the owner of the house occupies the house, she would, if it was just her working, this would be in compliance, operating the business out of a house?
Yeah, the business has been operated out of a house. It's registered with the Commonwealth, and she said, "Well, that's an engine on 7 Ferris Road."
Right. So the only issue is she can't have an employee come and work in the house?
Right. That's not a member of the house here.
And the roof, and the roof, and the roofs.
The roof is a separate.
Yeah, but those are the two issues that-
Right.
Yeah.
So, um, maybe ask Attorney Lemon. They've submitted this. Can we rule on the roof?
Just on that?
Yes.
I'd like to clean that up and then-
The two-part process. Maybe we can hold this.
And, and if they were, if they, if they set it up, they're working at the house and the grand, granddaughter decided to work out her, her own house for the company. Because a lot of people work from home these days. They don't have to be in the office per se.
Yeah.
If the granddaughter did act on the 7 Ferris Road, then there would be no use of a permit from the council.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, like, just have the phone at your house.
So-
But again, I don't, I don't see that as an issue from my conversation with the board council. It's just in the process.
Yeah.
Okay. So can we split that in our ruling or how will we have to rule for it here? Dofer it to the city council?
Is the motion only to grant the variance explicitly and then leave it at that?
That would be, that would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Just want to be clear because-
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we head into listening to anybody from the, anybody who would like to speak in favor or against? So we're opening it to anybody in attendance that would like to speak in favor. Thank you. In favor of the petition. Okay, not seeing anybody here. Um, anybody who would like to speak against the petition that might be attending? Seeing none? Uh, what is the wish of the board?
Um, I'd like to make the motion to grant the variance for the shed location without, and, and, um, deferring the, uh, the business operation to the city council should a special permit be needed. Basically, variance to grant the shed.
Okay.
And the deck?
And the deck, yeah. It's kind of two roofs.
Yeah. I would, I would feel differently if the, that the roof was attached to the shed, but it clearly is not.
Oh, and there's two, it's kind of like two roofs, end up down.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Um, and I think that we can go forward with the roll call.
Member Christopher?
Yes.
With the shed and the roof only?
Yep.
And defer to the councils? Okay. Member Maggio?
Yes, for the shed and the roof.
Member Olson?
Yes, to grant shed and roof.
Member Crowitz?
Yes, to grant the shed and roof.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to grant shed and roof.
Perfect.
All right. We're done here. Have a good night. All right. Now we will be moving on to our final case, our continued case number 1009639 Lynn Shore Drive. We've already heard this case and it's a continued case, so we're going to be waiving the reading. We don't have to, um, go through the reading. So please, Attorney Vitale, as the petitioner, go right ahead and we'll start with the petitioner.
So, this is our architect, who, uh, is begging, sending all kinds of, running off the chairs. Uh, so let me do this because I know, he's here in response to the request of the architect, the president. And, uh, and we've sent some, some ones that came, um, giving the threat to the question, I think, Mr. Olson, and, uh, there's a great thing I would respect. He grants, I know he's collecting some other, Jiro. And I would just like to present these things, and then my hand, so let me, you know, questions that you may have. The material I have for you, uh, in, I, it's a weird, did, where talking so, is that you heard from two people at 16 and 18 Greystone Park. Then I'd love to tell you one thing, that in 2012, I got a variance to that building, which I had talked to, to allow them to have a roof deck, have them have an extension of the property, uh, with specific conditions. I can't say whether they go on those conditions. But this goes to my point about the charity that's staying, the, the home behind, while the variance from the board of appeals to build the roof. These folks who show up, who are not brothers, uh, Jamie, who I spoke against, having, uh, what essentially is the same relief they got, uh, whether they were aware of it in 2012. So I gave these to the clerk. I don't know whether, uh-
I sent them out.
So you have that. And you can see, it was down to many stipulations, including a very full unit. Which now has, I think, bulk it or whatever. But I, I sort of get out of the process after I review all the decisions and the exercise of the variance is up to the, the petition. The same folks pointing to across the street at number 23, uh, those people drawn a variance from this hole, and I brought topics of that. Now I'm thinking, so that, and that's in 2018. I can't take credit for this one. This one went, maybe I don't know what I did. They allowed demolition of the existing structure, the construction of a two-story attached garage with storage space above on an undersized lot, increasing the block coverage from 33 to 45 steps. So I was here essentially to get this 4865. Uh, in response to your question, uh, I think the building commissioner is all right that we do, we need a variance. Uh, and what I want to come to that is I come to a thrilling conclusion, I'll keep out of it. Architect, I don't want to keep his kids up too late, so. Uh, but let me give you this one, which is at 23 Greystone. So 23 Greystone, 16 Greystone, uh, they, they all have decks and roofs and heightings and block coverage, but all bring the variances. And I would take credit for one.
I'm ready.
With the other block conditions on the line, I brought them in this one, uh, at number 23.
Okay. Thanks, CM. Um, before we head with the architect with any questions on the dimensional aspects, I do want us to read, we got a official correspondence from ISD related to a question that the board officially made in relation to having to also have an additional finding if this was a little bit wider in scope. And we're going to be reading first the letter that we got, just to have it on record.
Okay, so this is a letter to the board from, um, the chief of ISD Building Commissioner Brett Bennett. The Inspection Services Department is in receipt of your request for an opinion regarding the above referenced property, 39 Lynn Shore Drive. In addition, with the records available to this department, this is a non-conforming lot and structure located in the single residence district R1 of the City of Lynn, containing 4,987 square feet of land and frontages of 62.91 feet, 20.01 feet, and 48.43 feet along Lynn Shore Drive and Greystone Park, as shown on the assessor's map. This property had at one time an additional address of 30 Greystone Park and was used as a single-family home with offices of a physician. Current legal use is as a one-family home. A use permitted in the single residence district R1. This is an undersized lot with inadequate rear yard setback, possibly exceeding lot coverage, see below. It is understood, understood that your applicant seeks your approval of a renovation of this one-family home, making significant change to both the footprint and envelope of the building. Provided in support of this application, our unstamped elevations and purported site plan already mentioned, which we have on file. It is under- plan already mentioned, which we have on file, it is understood, the zoning, the zone ordinance for the City of Lynn, Section 8, requires a one-family home in a single residence district to have a minimum of 10,000 square feet of lot size, front yard setback of 10 feet, minimum frontage of 75 feet, side yard setback of seven and a half feet, minimum rear yard setback of 15 feet, maximum of two and a half stories, maximum height of 35 feet, and maximum building area of 30%. The renovation as proposed in the attached plans increases the non-conforming nature of the structure, the project as proposed results in a lot coverage of approximately 40%, well in excess of the maximum allowed under the zone ordinance for the City of Lynn, which is 30%. Accordingly, to proceed with the proposed alteration, creating a new, greater non-conformity in this structure requires both. A finding under General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, that the proposed addition, increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and two, multiple dimensional variances for such things as lot size, maximum lot coverage, and rear yard setback, please be further aware that in accordance with the City of Lynn Zone Ordinance, Section 13, you may appeal this decision to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Olson, we have that on file, and I just want to make a quick note here because we got, usually we get before 48 hours communications and other ones, and we're able to read them and have them on file, we've been getting communications within the last 24 hours or last 12 hours, but we do want to make them part of the record, so what I'm going to do is just mention fairly quickly who the the people, the folks who have been sharing these communications with the zoning board, and then we'll just accept them in file. First, we have a communication for Edward McLoughlin, we have an email, we also have one from Carrie Hartwick also, we also have some pictures, and these are in favor as well as additional context from Mr. McLoughlin, I just want to make a motion to accept and file these without having to read them since we got them less than 48 hours before, maybe not all members have read it, if there's anybody who seconds that, just to have it filed.
There's also text in there too.
Yeah, in the text, yeah, we also have that and we'll also accept it in file, so I move to waive the reading of these and just accept them on file.
I'll second to waive the reading and accept it to file.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have that out of the way.
Let me start with responding to the Building Commission's 11, which I think is dated recent vintage, I mean, I saw it today in 2007, sorry, but in anticipation of that, and in my understanding, and Jim Moore's left, but there's a debate in the legal community of whether with a 486 finding, which we clearly asked for, you need also to have a variance, so I hedge my bet, and I want to tell you that I filed for a variance at 39 Lynn Shore Drive, which is scheduled for June 30 hearing. I also want to respond by saying that I agree with some of the things that the Building Commission said, but certainly, an undersized lot, we don't need a variance, that lot's been that size since 1890 or whatever, 1880, and that is long before there was zoning in the City of Lynn under state zoning statute, and we're not varying the lot size, but I will say this, he comments on this no plan from a surveyor, I submitted Geo Fugero's plan, who's a registered professional engineer, and he says the lot size is 5,138, and with respect to the size of the lot that's what the architect used because we rely on a professional engineer's plan, it says it's 5,138, he's got a zoning table, I asked board where he says that's the size of the lot, what's the relevance of that, that goes to how you calculate the lot coverage, but with respect to the lot size, I said to you before, this is a unique lot, it's a corner lot, it's of a regular shape, but I can't make it any bigger, that's the size it's been always and forever, and that's why it's large and forming, and I don't need a variance for lot size, and I don't need a variance for frontage, and I don't need a variance for sideline, and I don't need a variance for front setback, and now let's go to the rear yard, that one he does cite, but what he overlooks is two things, it's had 10.4 feet for the rear yard since the building was built, or perhaps, as you recall, I said to you the last hearing, in 1996, the Board of Appeals granted a variance, not the building, didn't even get a variance, they just issued a building permit to extend the rear of the property, so if that extended the rear of the property into the 15-foot rear yard requirement, that ship has sailed, you had 10 years to complain about not having the requisite rear yard, long gone, so we do have the requisite rear yard, we have it because either it was pre-existing, or they gave a building permit for it back in 1996, so what we're really talking about, as I said when Mr. Christopher asked, I was the one who put in the ad that we might need a variance with respect to lot coverage because we're extending it, but I want to say this, that I believe that the clarity and the plan and the block plans that we filed support that the lot is 5,138, and finally, because I don't want to keep the kids up too late, I don't want Eric, who's more knowledgeable, one of the other things is the plans, the plans are unstamped, he's a registered architect of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, he can stamp the plans, and he can answer and speak to the questions that are more important than Mr. Olson here, but at my point of view, one final item, which is that, at the end of the day, I brought you copies, but you were already continued, you were already agreed with respect to, the zone ordinance is changing, so lot size is going to be 6,000, frontage is going to be 50, we've got 16 going around the corner, but it's almost even, but also, I want to point out that our copies being too, it's my understanding that this witness is above, can be published, and when it is, it's going to be in effect, and when it's in effect, it's going to say that lot coverage is now 35%, and Eric's going to tell you that what we're questioning is 39% so we're 4% over, and I gave you a variance in the street at number 23, with four of the fields in 2018, and from a lot of the block coverage before. And so the other item I want to do, and I haven't seen this with Eric, because he's working with the current plan and the current code, and the listener question is, instead of not only changing the required lot coverage, height is now longer in stories, it moves up. So that the real issue is those that you, Mr. Olson, raised, and Eric's here to answer, he's filed, you were able to do that, but now I have how he arrived, the dimensions with respect to, and I think he sent to him, I think he sent back the answers, that he's here to answer any question.
So I have a quick question, so just quick clarification, Sam, so we have this draft zoning ordinance that presumably in the near future, something will be adopted, this isn't set in stone, it might change or it might not, just to have that clear here on the conversation.
The day they advertise it, it's in effect.
City Council may vote it down, City Council may extend it, City Council may decide to not act.
Yeah, but as far as it being in effect.
But it's a draft.
No.
It's in effect right now?
It's in effect.
So right now we're reviewing under these?
No, no, my understanding is June the 9th.
Okay.
This is going to be the date of first publication, the state statute says that when the zone ordinance is, notice is given by first publication, it's in effect, so on June the 9th, those rules are in effect.
Okay, so.
Right now, and also I filed in June the 3rd for a hearing with respect to the issue of whether we need to, in response to Mr. Christopher, the variance as well, and I put that in, saying we wanted to exceed 30%, which is the con.
So. I have Attorney Lamanna who would, I would also appreciate some context here.
What I thought is, is, we're saying it's true and valid, but once it's advertised, if approved in its entirety, it would be retroactive to the date of publication.
It was published.
If the council rejected it, then it would be meaningless essentially.
Okay, so any approvals would, he now void at that point, if it's not in compliance with reverting back to the original?
Well, I would advise any attorney to apply for a variance for the June 3 meeting, that it is possible that they won't be able to proceed if they, yeah, so that was the correct action.
Okay.
But it does not mean that just because it was advertised, it becomes effective and doesn't need council approval or planning.
So from a practical perspective, outside of the dimensional questions that we have, can a petitioner right now in this range of time where it's expected to be released, publicized, and it would be retroactively granted if City Council approves it, from a practical side, why wouldn't a petitioner just either withdraw or wait until it takes effect and then go forward if some of those things are being relieved?
I would argue that the proposed charter is irrelevant to what's before you tell, if the existing charter was, you have to decide.
Yeah.
It sounded if it approved as proposed, there would still be a need for a variance, because it goes from 30 to 35, and they're still at the 40s.
Yeah.
So can I, I just want to.
We still need 40 and 65 in that one.
Just a point of fact, I just want to correct, the, any plan that shows property lines needs to be stamped by a registered land surveyor, an engineer is not permitted to stamp that nor an architect, it has to be a registered land surveyor when it comes to property lines, so we would appreciate that stamped to be by a land surveyor that's licensed to do so. Yeah.
But are there other questions that you brought in?
Yeah, and we have a question from just, we're going, want to put to bed the rest of the kind of MGL questions here, you brought us the 486 for 23, said there was another one for 16, 18 Greystone?
Yes.
And that was.
See that to the clerk.
Okay.
It's all in there.
It's on that, I just tracked it. So that was also.
That's one being the butters.
That was also in 486?
That, that, that variance is granted long ago, but other two was granted within the recent.
Right, yeah, I get that one, but they were both. Did they also have the additional dimensional variance, so it was a 486 and a dimensional variance?
That's strange, you read the treaty, they're sort of not saying, there certainly wasn't a 48 finding for the 16 and 18 one, because that was granted many years.
Okay.
Before the state zoning statute, the other two were granted with the state zoning statute, you can compare what I got for the people who live at 16, 18, as opposed to what the woman got at 23.
Right.
Or what the people who live at 26 and 28, the last thing I wanted to point out is there was a statement in there that was quote never a garage here, there's a building permit in the street jacket that shows there was a garage built at that property, and I spoke with the gentleman back in, who's now living in Seattle, but owns, and he said, he's the one who told him they leave them in the garage, so clearly once was a garage back 39 Lynn Shore Drive, and.
All right, we'll, we'll continue with.
The documents reflect that, whether people have memories of that, there's a document that says the garage was there, I mean, there's no document that shows it was ever removed.
Great, so, all right, I think that we can start addressing any dimensional or other questions, and name an address, please.
Eric Zacherson with the Context Workshop, my address is 9 Sackville in Charlestown, Massachusetts.
Thank you, so I just, so some context on the design as it was proposed, so what we're looking at, just everybody's on the same page, we have a garage at the base level, and then there's two additional stories, am I correct?
So, our argument is that the entire project property has, is two and a half stories.
Two and a half.
And a portion of the garage is taller, it is, it could be considered, but we consider the whole property together, and in calculating the half-story that is the top of the building, we basically are creating habitable space, that is, that space that is seven feet or more in ceiling height, so that the top floor is 50%, the habitable space on the top floor is 50% or less, in this case just a tad less than the level below that, therefore, you have level one, you have level two, and you have a level above that that is half as large as that, if you measure the space that is seven feet or more. Now, I believe, we did, we came to this conclusion based on other zoning codes because we could not, and are not aware of a half, a definition for half-story in the zoning code.
Yeah, and the first one is a garage, what's on the other ones?
So the first, the, the first floor has garage and other living space, and the second floor has living space, and the third floor has living space, the addition is garage, living space above it, and living space above that, but in sum total, it's two and a half stories.
When we're talking about living spaces, it's just general open space, that somebody can put anything there, is there plumbing, is there?
Good rooms, bedrooms, bathrooms, like we're reconfiguring quite a bit of the interior space, they're actually not increasing the bedroom count, I just missed proposed addition, but there would be segmented rooms on everything.
How would that work if there's, that, they're segmented portions, but they do.
Add the whole house.
Everything.
And in the end, there will be the same number of bedrooms as there are today.
Okay, you have floor plans?
I do, but I'll have it printed out.
I would like to see what that looked like, it's hard to follow, it's just a verbal.
The variance is that now it's being reduced.
Yeah, one could argue that the current home has more than four bedrooms, because some of the office spaces or, or other rooms might have been used as bedrooms, but I think there were, in my definition, there were four bedrooms, there are four bedrooms, there might have been others that were used as sleeping rooms or guest rooms.
So the floor plans, we haven't received those, but those are developed and you have those?
Yes.
So I think that those are pretty important materials, because if we're just taking into account the addition of the garage, which has a bedroom and has additional living space on top of it, which, anyways, the point is that how those intersect, how do you enter those additional living spaces, us not knowing how that looks like or how that flows, it's, it's a pretty important piece of information to determine.
I appreciate that, however, the dimensional standpoint, from a zoning standpoint, is there a maximum, minimum number of bedrooms that are allowed on the site, or that?
I'm not concerned with the maximum or minimum, I'm concerned with the additional amount of lot coverage and stories, how does that connect with the rest of the fourth floor plan?
Correct.
How do you enter the space?
Exactly, and that's the, that's the, the way I interpret it, in this conversation, we're talking about the volume, we're talking about living space, coverage, all of the height, all of the items that are done, and so the garage, don't think of the garage as being separate from the building, it is directly attached and all of the space.
Can you talk into the mic, please?
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry, yes, the living space is directly attached to the rest of the house, the garage and the living space are going to be directly attached to the rest of the house, it's not an detached garage with a bridge over to space, basically, the garage becomes part of the mass of the home.
It makes it harder for us to determine whether the intent, same what we're presenting, that the intent is to rent out a space above the garage, which makes a whole difference.
Understood.
And that's why, and that's one of the reasons I would like to see.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to hide the plans, they've just been in constant kind of flux as we've been figuring out how to comply with the zoning envelope.
Okay, so I want to understand, you know, when I look at this plan, I look at the sign elevation, and I see the existing building is two and a half stories, and I look at the addition, I'll call it the tower.
The tower.
There's a garage on the backside, there's a second story, and to me, it looks like a third story, and then some. And then some eve space above that. That's a fairly steep pitched roof that brings it above the height of the existing building. So I, I'm counting three stories here. When I look at the roof line of the existing building, in the middle, it starts down at the top of the second story. I, I don't understand why that is three stories.
I, I, I would agree with you. If the garage and the addition that it is part of were standing alone, you would say that's a three-story building. However, as a part of a, the overall massing, it is a two, it is two stories with a, a level above that that is fifty percent of the level below that. And the, while the, the new addition, the feature tower that is at the front of the property, is taller than the existing building, it, its average height is not taller than what is allowed by zoning. And so if we were to tear off the roof of the entire property and put the entire roof at the height of the tower with the slope of the tower, it would still be thirty-five feet.
Excuse me, excuse me, if you have a chance to ask questions?
We'll ask questions.
Yeah.
We will open it to other questions. Um, any other questions, comments from any other members on the board? Terms of dimensions? Anything else?
I'm trying to.
So from my end, in the previous meeting and hearing that we had, it was very difficult for me to imagine how this was going to be laid out. And I think that having whatever final sets, preliminary draft final sets of floor plans that you have, at least I will feel comfortable to be able to make a decision and vote on it once I see how that looks like from the top to the bottom. Not just looking at a cross-section like.
That's okay.
I would like to look at the floor plans. Um, a lot of the other mentioning attorney vitales, other cases that have happened around the community and the neighborhood, um, congestion and otherwise, also the ability to rent out the space or the ability for creating a second unit and all these other things are also top of mind on my end. Um, so I also want to understand more or less, what is the intent of the livable space that is being used in the whole renovation of the house? Is there, is there clarity on that or is that just?
I mean, it's a four-bedroom, single-family home. It's a spacious one.
Yeah.
More, more spacious than most of our projects. But, um, I, off the top of my head, I can't think of how one would rent out a room within this space or rent out an Airbnb or.
We don't. I understand. I did not realize that was part of the concern.
Yeah.
Just, just from, from, from my perspective, the intent of this was to put a garage, but there is significant living space. There's living space being expanded in the front of the house.
Mm-hmm.
So it's increasing the space. And they're proposing to increase living space above the garage area on the second. And to me, it looks like a third floor. And, and, and I'm looking at this as an addition that's increasing the non-conformity of the site. So to me, this is more detrimental, because it's a three-story in my mind. You're putting a three-story onto a two and a half story and you're saying the average is two and a half stories, is what, what you're saying. But this is a piece of non. Now, if this was in a conforming situation, it would have an issue. If it was in the front of the house, I wouldn't have an issue with that height. But where it's increasing that non-conformity there, like if you were doing that within the footprint of the existing deck and creating that height there on the other side of the, the building, I probably have less issues with that on the other side of, of, of the building, because that's, it's already occupied with the deck and that's being refinished. But to put it on ground that's increasing the building footprint and then making it the most imposing architectural feature on the building. So it's going to stand up above the existing house and the surrounding community. It's going to create a shadow to the butters. It's going to change the environment for the butters. If you've got three stories, essentially, it's almost three and a half stories when, the way you look at it from the reality. It's gonna change sort of the, you know, docking up the neighbors' yards and that sort of thing. So for me, that tower is, is overkill for this fairly large building. I mean, it's, it's already, what, forty-five, forty-five hundred square feet? You got an addition in the front and addition here. So I don't know what the final number is that, of that is, but it's probably over five thousand square feet, I would say.
Correct.
That's a huge house for a single-family house. Um, so my issues is I have a, a big issue the way that, that architectural feature is presented. Um, I look at that as a three-story addition clad to the house to a two and a half story house. And to me, it, I don't think it fits that location very. But that's, that's my thought and, and you can go back and evaluate that, but that's my feeling right now.
In addition to that, I would also like to say that one of the things that we're looking at with the non-conformity of this project is the fact, um, that we listed as being not detrimental to the neighborhood. And you just heard what he said, and I think it increases the detriment to the neighborhood.
I, I understand.
So. Yeah, good. Sorry.
Simply asking the question, the height of the property is measured at thirty-five feet, correct? Does anybody disagree that the height of this?
Existing?
No, not existing home. The proposed, the proposed home.
Yeah, because the land drops. Is the land drop?
The land drops, yes.
Yeah.
But that's factually.
I mean, that, that's why it's thirty-five feet.
I'm just asking, I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is there's concern about the, the building being too tall, even though we're not asking for behavior, even though the, the zoning set it at thirty-five.
Yeah, I look at you, putting, you're putting three stories in. It's three stories.
And you asked for a cobage, because look, it's not three feet. A cobage is a single fault. So I, I really feel even that the way it was submitted was inaccurate. So, I mean, I think Mr. Christopher, you brought that up on the last meeting, that I mean, we should maybe it was a variety issue. It is not a proposition that the house is. And, you know, so it's really hard for us to come to a decision on this, because it is detrimental to the neighborhood. It isn't what you submitted for. You submitted for a garage and we're getting a house, we're getting maybe fifteen hundred square feet. I mean, we're getting a lot, probably more than that. I, this is very troublesome to me, actually.
I appreciate that. We can take it back to the owner. And I understand.
And I'm just curious. Concern. From, from a practical perspective, I know that anybody can do anything that they want with their property, but is there a reason why not just the garage addition and why the significant additional living space increase, which has been framed originally as a garage, but it's more than that, because it's not just a single-story garage?
I, I, I can't speak to why this might have been submitted as a garage addition. I, I've thought of it since the beginning as an addition to the home, which has a garage and additional living space. But I, I can't speak to why.
Especially since I'm like the neighbors, I think it would be okay with a one-story garage addition. So it's, it, it's like, this really makes it detrimental to the neighborhood.
In particular, because.
Because of the.
Even though the height isn't compliant.
Even though the height isn't compliant, it's still, you're looking for a variance. You're still looking for a variance.
We, we, no, I'm not questioning that.
It's like, this is like a really important thing. I mean, this is not being a good neighbor.
It's like the idea of saying this being a good neighbor. Advise these plans for legitimate concerns.
Yes.
Being a good neighbor. What we want is the same treatment other property owners were complaining about. They got a variance from this board. I got one. Somebody got one years ago, somebody got one more recently.
Yeah.
But to have people come forward, living the properties, they got the variance, just to build the thing and complain that what we're doing is somehow more detrimental in its effect on the neighborhood. I'm only putting that out there, that the neighborhood contains places that have similar structures built by variance. And the smaller, the more conditions, like the one I got, some have little conditions that say two feet down, two and a half story building, whatever. So it, it, in terms of what we're seeking to vary here, we didn't ask for height variance, because we need. So I go back to how we see it's more detrimental in its effect when we meet the height we're requiring. We need that. We're not asking for variance. We're asking for a lot.
How many neighbors of those other people who looked for variances? How many of their neighbors came to object to their plans?
Do, that's why there were stipulations in the law in two thousand and twelve. But at the end of the day, it isn't about who complains. It's about who thinks wants what the requirements of state law would say. You have no jurisdiction about the interior of a single-family home. Number two, it says with respect to dimensional, we need a variance. We've acknowledged that. I told you I filed for a variance for lot coverage. That's the only thing that doesn't need the present zoning code. And there's a debate among the legal community whether I need both. So I assumed that you were going to say yes, so I asked for the, the variance requirement. But the forty, I still need the forty A six standard, as a member, Christopher pointed out. But at the end of the day, what, what this is about is applying the current zone ordinance. And if you want to apply the current zone ordinance, the height limitation is thirty-five feet. And we don't exceed that. And there's more than one way to measure that. We don't exceed that. Do we exceed lot coverage? We don't exceed it by what was being characterized, because I say the, that we're at thirty right now, I'd, I'd say. And we're going to be, if we did all of this, we'd be at thirty-nine. And, and sooner or later, it's going to be thirty-five. We're going to be four feet over by the time we get this through or get a building permit. And so there, there's a scale of things, but if I'm required to get both, I filed to get the variance, I worded the request for the variance to say allow for an, a, uh, an addition in renovations that result in more than thirty percent lot coverage, because I think that's the relief we need by variance. But to bring in this, it, it isn't a plebiscite. This is applying the state statute and the zoning ordinance and applying it fairly across the board. It isn't like I, well, if you refer to the dance, then you block every subsequent person that comes along. It doesn't work that way.
Well, it's something that passed in two thousand and two is not going to pass in two thousand and twenty-five.
Just, just the point is the, the examples, the examples you cite here are for, for a two-story garage with space above. Not a three-story living space with a high pitched roof. It was mainly in the existing house.
What was the variance that they allowed?
This is what they allowed. So.
The one I.
So you're putting, you're putting, you're putting a three-story building with a high pitched roof, seven and a half feet away from the neighbor. That's, that's, that's.
It's not.
Height.
First of all, the application and the measurement of height is by the formula the architects use. It's not a three-story building, right? That, and when we're talking about measuring height, we're using the formula that he, that's part of the state building code. You can't get a building permit. So this is at, because we're applying varying standards to a simple proposition. Does anybody, I, I don't think even the people who are opposed can stand there in good faith and say they're against the garage. How can they be against the garage? They all got them. And it's an accessory use to a single-family dwelling. So I think, and we reduce the size of the garage. Let's start with, we've gone through like five or six variations, and I know it's frustrating to the members, but every time somebody says make a change, we go back, we use our plan.
This is the first set of plans that I saw.
Excuse me?
This is the first set of plans that I saw in front of this board. I haven't seen any changes to plans.
Well.
They weren't submitted.
I've been to the door-to-door with various neighbors to look at plans. This came about to respond to your request to plan. And every time you do it, it's like moving the goalpost. Somebody says, well, what about changing this on the plan?
Nothing's changed to these plans since the last meeting.
We're answering the questions about what do we need a variance for? We need it for lot coverage. And I filed a variance that says I want to get renovations and an addition with lot coverage in excess of thirty percent. If I thought that we were required to seek a variance for height, I would have asked for it. We're not required to get a variance for height.
You're not putting in a garage, you're putting in a, a, a house extension. You're extending the footprints of the house. If you were building a whole new house, I would, I would agree with the, the height issue.
To build a whole.
Putting in addition, that to me, th- this addition is three stories.
I think you're going to take a look.
The addition that you want is three-story. That's what you're asking for variance for. It's not two and a half stories.
Judgment about the effect in the neighborhood. I think you ought to go look at sixteen, eighteen, that I got the variance for. And look at the height of that building. And look at that. And then take a look at the one, uh, it's twenty-three. Uh, because if you're judging height in relative, how does it impact? Right, let's start with the people at twenty-six and twenty-eight. We don't block their entire view. And I gave you the tenant case. You may take a fall with that, but it's not me. The tenant case, the Supreme Court in Massachusetts said that height and view, view is a community interest. It's not a, it's somebody's property. Nobody's come up here, except lately, or except recently, a professional architect. But you hear people say, well, it's going to do this. We've, we submitted some of the things you entered in. We, we submitted to respond to the fact that we're not blocking the entire view. We met with individual neighbors, one of whom was here earlier, at least ten, is still here. Uh, he's an immediate butter. So we, we've been dealing with trying to do what I would say, respond to legitimate concerns. And part of that has been that we keep getting different opinions about what is this and what is that? We're just trying to get it right. If, if we weren't trying to get it right, we wouldn't have gone through the, the many steps that we have to get to this point. And we're still trying to get it right. That's why we brought him here, because he's more qualified than me, at least, to answer some of those questions in terms of the calculations. But I think there's really two things. One is the effect on the neighborhood. And I, and I think I've characterized what I think the neighborhood is. And then the other is the request, uh, for the variance if we see lot coverage. Uh, and, and as I told Cherry, we can't go beyond, we could certainly do less. Um, and with respect to the, why we didn't bring the floor plan is because we understood we were reducing the number of bedrooms that had been there. But you, if you want to see the floor plan, you can see the floor plan. And, but I go back to the beginning. Under forty A six, there's what's called the forty A second exception. It says a one-family home can be converted to a two-family home. And there's a Supreme Court case right on point that, that I used to bring back nineteen Wood Street, where the land court judge said, I didn't need a forty A six finding. I didn't need a variance. And he ordered the city to link to give them a building permit, because we were converting a one-family home in a two-family district without changing the footprint. So we didn't increase any non-conformity. It's called the Bellotta case. That's called, and it deals with, there's a special protection for the conversions of one families to two families that deal, that protect one and two-family homes. I do agree.
But we're not doing a two-family home.
If you increase a non-conformity, then you need to get some relief. And so if the relief is to get a variance, then I filed to get that variance. But what's, what's been the moving target is some people want it this way, some people want it that way. And, and sooner or later, we got to fix on where it's at. I don't think that the, the, if you meet the required zoning, uh, maximum and you don't violate, I don't think I need a variance. I don't think you can say I'm doing something substantially more detrimental to the label, because it's an allowed use. It's an allowed dimension. Thirty-five feet is an allowed dimension. Lot coverage is a different issue. And that, that's why I filed a seat relief for that. But what we're trying to do is get it right.
I have a question from Member Christopher or anybody else.
Yeah, I guess it's not so much a question, but I do, I do, I guess, believe that it's the, the issue of lot size and the extension, we're talking about essentially bulk of the build. Uh, you know, and I do think that that's exactly what you're trying to look at when you, when you make a regulation about lot size. Um, so I'm less concerned about the height, because I agree with you. The height it conforms per, and a, a building inspector's letter says that. Um, I didn't see anything in that letter that said anything about, uh, taking issue with the height of the building. But what I do think is fair for this board to be taken into account is the fact that the building is outside of what Asamooning says is prescribed for lot coverage. Um, and so that does take into account the neighbor's views and, um, you know, I, I guess there's a little bit of discrepancy about the rear setback. little bit of discrepancy about the rear setback, how close we are to the other, to the other property. But even given that, I think a lot of what people, what people's concerns have been are germane to the, to this, to the granting of this proposed variance. And, and that's, I guess, what I would like to, that's my biggest concern is that you are owes, whether or not it's four feet or whether or not it's a little bit, you're creating a non-conformity that comes outside of our zoning code. And so that, that's where I, and I know, I don't want to be accused of moving the goalposts on you, but that's my concern, is that the lot size is, you're going over that. And whether or not it's four feet or a little bit or, you know, the new zoning ordinance comes into effect and it's even less, that's my concern. And I do think that that's fair for the board to take into account.
Well, there were two or three. I've been learning some of the jargon of architects. I think this is what they call massive. Is that, yeah. So that, that, that's susceptible, but I certainly don't have that expertise. That you can keep something within the footprint and, and deal with massive in more than one way. But what I'm trying to do is solve or start a, which is a garage that we reduce from two to one. Then step to the addition, it's conceivable that the new one is four hundred. But with respect to the addition, we, you know, we played a long time, we've done several plans, and at this point, if there's one that can work, that the, I don't know whether we can reduce, it's called a massive, but I, I think we could get closer. I don't know whether we can get to 30 feet because if we can do something within 30 feet, we don't need anything for anything, including that. So I, I would think basically, I have a vague memory of when I came here 12 years ago, that they put all these stipulations on because of concerns that people have. Those were legitimate concerns. And we accepted all those stipulations. So I think you've got a range of choices, and I told Kerry that you can't get more, but you could accept less. And so the real that line is, I guess is what we're all trying to struggle to find. I, I told you before, I appreciate the fact that we've been allowed this much time, but I had to go to the neighborhood meeting, which some neighbors showed and some didn't, to respond to those people. And then we went and they talked to individuals and we responded to some of those people. So at this point, we're so far in, what we're trying to do is respond to you and you, and Mr. Olson asked questions, and that's why we brought Eric here. But it's helpful to understand what the concern is, but I think we're not on the same page as that maybe you and I are a little height, and Mr. Olson and I apparently are not. So where I thought we needed relief, I didn't wait for the building commission. I just, I just went and fired it because I figured that they'd say I'd have to go and get a variance, so I fired it. So that's on, I think it's the 3rd of June.
Uh huh.
And if we need to get a floor plan, I think we can produce a floor.
Yep. That would be great. And I see Attorney Lamanna, if we wanted to quickly jump in.
There's caution, you want to recognize that there is not a variance application on Friday night of the lot coverage. So that's the standard, very different for a variance as opposed to the 48 second. So that, that will be on, on June 3rd.
Yep.
I think.
Victor. Victor. Next meeting.
Read his text.
Sorry?
Read Victor's text.
Okay. Victor, do you have something to read?
No, I'm just looking. No, I read it, but.
Read your text.
Yes. Okay.
Oh yeah, there was one other thing I recall is, is significant changing to the roof lines of this existing structure as well as additions. So I just want to understand how, you know, there's downspouts on the building, how those are being handled, where the building is going to be much closer to the above us. And where are those, where are those gutters going to discharge? And how is that going to be managed?
We had the CMR.
Right now it has a chance to go out into the property and sort of dissipate and find its way. But right now, now it's going to be seven and a half.
Well, right. The intent is not to have, it's no longer how water just flow out into the property. It's going to be something that can change. That we have to plan all of our projects really. So the idea is that water, water is going to go in some kind of a change, then the gaps are.
We go out of this.
Entirely new roof trade system applied.
So the roof trade will go into a sister and a drywall and a granit wall.
To design that. We don't have a civil engineer designing the arrangements.
So you're planning on it?
Of course.
Yeah.
There are a number of engineers who mean, we don't have structural drawings.
And I thought, I thought we provided the, the site at 750 CMR or whatever it was with respect to the drainage. I mean, we sat over.
I got everything in the folder.
Of how we answered, I think, whatever those questions are, drainage is answered there and sites the.
Yeah, but there's, there's very specifics, you know, citing, yeah, we're going to be regulation. This site has, the building itself is very unique, a lot of character, but it's, it's going to take a little thought like how it comes off the roof and, and around the site.
Well, in fact, we're totally not in agreement about what the shape of the building is. That guy's case is planned.
Right. Okay. So I know that we've been taking up time.
We can plan whatever the.
To be able to move forward with the next steps. I just want clarification from Mr. Lamanna. I see here on the actual case description, alteration of pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling by addition of a private garage. Finding that such use in the R1 district is not substantially more detrimental, and then makes reference to the lot coverage. We are not voting tonight for the lot coverage, even though it's made because a separate filing was made?
Yes, there is a right.
Okay. So we're only voting for the garage? What are we voting for?
The extension of the non-conformity.
Related to the setback?
That it's covered state.
I, I would just think that it would make sense to do everything at once.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. If, is that a possibility from the board to be able to do that? Would it be two cases in a single night or can they both be blended into one single case?
It happens very often where a petition will file for a 48 six and a 48 ten combined with the same petition.
Okay. Okay. All right. I like that idea, but we have to continue on with the rest of our steps to be able to finish our discussion on case 10096. So we're going to be opening up to anybody else who is in favor of the petition. Anybody else in favor of the petition in attendance that would like to speak? Seeing none, anybody against the petition that would like to speak, please come forward. Name an address and then there will be also a sign sheet. And if you can speak to the microphone key.
Susan Baker, 28 Greystone Park.
Here.
Yeah.
Which is mine.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, and we have similar pictures also that we have that, that vantage point that we also have on site.
So if they put in what they want, we'll give a suggestion for any of our floors.
Anybody else wants to take a look or? Okay. Is it? Yeah. Okay, we have it then.
Just you name an address.
Just name an address.
That's fine. Thank you.
So we're fighting totally against this. I think it will be absolutely ridiculous and really interfere with Kent and I. But I don't understand what she wants to tell instead of the garage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak to the board, leave anything on record against the petition?
Hi, I'm Ed McLaughlin. I'm an attorney and I also own unit number two at 1618 Greystone Park. And I would like to address a few things that Attorney Vitale brought up above prior variances and permits to rent on the street. For example, apparently he vouched that there was a 48 six reason with roof deck at 1618 Greystone Park in 2012. I wasn't saying.
I got 16 and 18, not a 26 in 2018.
16 and 18 is what I would say. You got the variance.
I did. Something bad went wrong.
All right.
Again, and I, I can appreciate it. Attorney Vitale certainly has decades of credibility of this, other boards in the town. He's been an attorney for almost 60 years. I've been an attorney for almost 50. I've thought I've been around a long time until I checked the, that's the part 10 years before me. And comes from the school apparently of whoever talks longer is harder wins. But this is the, this area of the Diamond District is, my wife and I fell in love with. I mean, literally, we saw this unit on a Friday and we bought it on Monday. We had no plans to downsize from our house, but our kids had grown up. It's a wonderful neighborhood. And there are two-family, three-family, multi-family, three condos at our location, two condos at 28. Everyone has a single-car garage. We have a three-car garage because of three units, but it's a single story. Everyone on the street has that. As far as the roof deck goes, you recall 2012 wasn't a particularly great year. This property at 1618 had fallen into disrepair. And finally, a developer came in with enough skill to put it all back together. And I think likely variance for the roof deck was, was thrown in to make the top unit, which is the biggest unit, more marketable in a bad market. Because in actuality, it doesn't impact on anyone in the neighborhood because it's so tall, I can't even go out there because of the traffic lights. Like I can't go on a modest deck. Or I have to literally almost creep over to the, um, but again, when we bought our unit, our side of the building looks through the backyard, there's both our bathrooms view the ocean. And again, view is, you know, it's not compensable, but this structure is so out of place really for the neighborhood. I mean, we already, I read this friends in Swansky in Marblehead, he dragged by 109. We enjoy drive and say, what the hell, what, what is that? And, and I don't want to live on a street that has another one across. I mean, this house is already 4,300 square foot and it's 13 rooms. A one-car garage, I don't think anyone has any objection to a one-car garage, but that would be fine so that Kerry Hartwood can park the truck. But again, 23 Greystone, I asked members of the board if they had a chance to look at the hearing from September 18, 2018 to explain why grossly unfair variance are permanently granted in that case. A house is owned by a single mother whose husband was in the military, committed suicide. And, you know, there were tears in the eyes of everybody, you know, when she described and she was building the garage and a storage area up above. So her son, who had taken up hockey like his father, could store his hockey, hockey equipment. He'd been befriended by local fishermen, he was known to store lobster pots up there. She already has signed contracts and so the board was concerned, Mrs. Curley in particular, that she was just building a second house of an R1 property and, and again, would be renting that out and renting out the major, main house, even though it's a single-family residence. In fact, she already had a contract to run water to the second floor. The board barred her from running water to the second floor, but it's already done. So it's now all habitable. And again, it's been reported to inspection services, but, you know, and I know that they are looking into it. But again, you know, we live in a big city, mostly wood frame houses, the inspection services department had plenty to do in terms of health and safety. So, you know, they were dedicated people, they can only do so many things, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So again, this, this whole addition is just building out the front of the house and building a garage. I don't think anyone would have a problem. But it's just building this massive structure that is bigger than the existing house. When you look, when I look across the street and turn directly at 23 Greystone, it, it makes no sense. Remember that hearing, two reporters testified that they walked the entire Diamond District and could not find a two and a half story garage anywhere around. It was totally out of character. Every single butter, everyone on the street was heard in opposition to it. But, you know, there goes the emotional play that was made. It was, it was granted with that limitation, hoping that it wouldn't provide a rentable bill, another rentable building space. Well, it has. I mean, eventually inspection services get around to it, right? Just watch the guy put in, you know, a heating, HBA system, system in there. They brought in the bathroom, you know, it's all habitable now. And my concern with this house, the owner of this house, a very sophisticated businesswoman that has been a financial director for some major multinational companies. I don't believe she put down $960,000 with no plan of what she was going to do with this house. So the potential deterrence of multi-use, multi-use building is there down the road. Once you have a habitable structure, she can buy this in condos, we'll have more cars. My, my problem is I can't even park in front of my, I can't park on the street. Luckily, you know, our 1618 has zero impact on the neighborhood. We have a vacant lot, 16 is here, there's the condo which has been there since 1880. There's a driveway with six parking spaces and three car garage. So we have nine parking spaces and plenty of open space. Our footprint in terms of where the sun rises and sets, there is no shadow on any property. Here, heads are going to find out when this structure goes up, that as soon as it hits noon time, you will never have afternoon sun because that, that will block it this way. And as Baker testified, when there is morning sun, she won't get it if I'm hurt there because it's totally blocked. I mean, it's just, why are we doing it? Why are we taking a 43 hundred-foot house, turning it into 6,500 square foot house with a garage? For what? I mean, there are 13 rooms already and two kitchens. There are the required places, the six-bedroom. And it was advertised as available for built out of the basement because it has separate entrances that can be used to spook property. Yeah. And that's my concern down the road. Is it, if this was a single-family house and really going to be used as a single-family house, I'd be more sympathetic. This, this neighborhood needs to be preserved. I mean, it's a board in this area and, you know, slowly, 23 Greystone was a major mistake. That just got by the board at the time. And again, you can listen to how that happened. It's very obvious. So, I mean, we are, all three units, I speak for them, are opposed to this. The impact on, on parking spaces, we already, we don't have enough parking spaces on the street. We don't care because we have off-street parking. But if I want to pull up and go to Market Desk, I want to just pull up in front of the unit on the sidewalk to unload groceries, there isn't a parking space. And, you know, and I'm afraid down the road, this will lead to, you know, more parking for all of us. So that's, that's my take on it.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin, can you sign that, please?
Do we have anybody else who would like to speak against the petition? Anybody else who would like to leave anything on record? One, two, going twice. All right, we're closed there. Attorney Lamanna, in order to have the scenario that Member Christopher brought on, being able to discuss all of these different elements on a single night, do we have to continue the case? And is that about it? Or do we have to do any additional action?
No, I would be simply to continue to the June 3rd meeting for a combination. I believe that the clerk has already gotten a signed extension because.
Yep.
This is supposed to be, I think it's filed in December or June.
Okay.
So there's no deadline.
Thank you.
June 3rd at 7:00 here?
Yes. Yes. All right, so I'll make a motion to continue and move that case to the next CBA meeting so that they can be discussed together. No stipulations or anything, but I do, we do want to see at least set of plans, floor plans, and then any additional information that might be of value or help to the board members for that meeting. But definitely, definitely the floor plans to be expected on that meeting. But definitely, definitely the floor plans to be expected on that meeting. If we can have a role play.
Actually, we need to get them before that. Who, who gave the motion on that? You did? And who seconded? Okay, thank you. Member Gilvey to continue?
Yes, to continue.
Member Christopher, continue?
Yes, to continue.
Member Olson to continue?
Yes, to continue.
Member Crowitz to continue?
Yes, to continue.
And Member Lopez Hernandez to continue?
Yes, to continue.
Okay.
All right. We don't have any other further business? Do we have a motion to adjourn? So move. All right, all those in favor say aye. I'm going to use the gavel now.
There we go.